Thank you. Welcome to the Easton School Committee meeting of Friday, November 15th. First, we have the minutes of October 3rd. Any comments or corrections or anything on those minutes?
None.
Okay, do I have a motion to accept these minutes?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Thank you. And the payments are going around right now? Okay. Out-of-state field trip, Dr. Cabral.
Thank you. Betty Almeida from Family and Consumer Science Department here is here, seeking the committee's approval to take thirty-seven students and two degree chaperones on a field trip in Rhode Island. Instead of giving you all the details, I will let Betty do that since she was kind enough to be willing today to respond that to you.
Right, so I would like to ask for your approval, please, to take the students to Johnson Miles University, Riverside Campus in Rhode Island. And they can accommodate forty people total. So the students are hoping that we can have this field trip, which includes lunch, of course, made by the Johnson Miles chefs and our students' chefs and training. They get a tour of the campus, and there's also a museum and a food science lab that we'd like to tour. And I'm not sure if there's anything else that you need, but I put the details on here, but it's a Wednesday in about three weeks in December. It'll be a full-day field trip as soon as we're able to get a bus to leave Almirems High School and return by the end of the day, so.
And it is just one bus because it's only thirty-seven, so yeah. This looks great.
So we know to show classes to the school other than substitutes to pay the students interested with payments, and if there is overwhelming interest, then we can see if we can schedule all different trips as well as five different foods classes.
And you're going, you are attending along with Ms. Pambrow, who's also a family consumer scientist and a paraprofessional.
That sounds great. Does anybody have any questions? Anybody want to sign up to go?
Yeah.
Do I have a motion to accept this out-of-state field trip?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Okay, thank you and good luck with that. Hopefully have a beautiful day.
Thank you.
Thanks, Betty.
Thank you, you too.
Okay, next we have approval of anonymous donation to the OA Art Department, Dr. Cabral.
Okay, so I'm sure you're aware, the mounted art that you see decorating the schools and even here at the school department, that the students complete that work is expensive to frame, and we have had a generous donor over the years complete that framing for us. Because of the new school committee policy of accepting donations and the fact that we want to acknowledge that that is being done by a generous donor, despite the fact that they would like to remain anonymous, I would like to bring before you the donation, which totals over $4,000 to have this work done. It includes two metal art display racks on casters, eleven art prints, and one hundred fifty sheets of acid-free mat boards with various surface materials. So the donor would like to have a letter from the school committee acknowledging the donation for tax purposes, but also we wanted to, despite the fact they're anonymous, let them know just how thankful we are for the opportunity of doing this and being able to display the students' work in this way. Despite, I mean, the work itself is obviously stunning, and they're very talented, and this helps keep it as professional-looking as it possibly can be. So we want to profusely thank this donor. Have you please accept this very generous donation, and then we can provide a letter on your behalf.
Okay. Any questions or comments? Okay, I'm gonna make a motion that we accept this very generous donation to the art department.
Second.
All those in favor? Thank you. And thank you to that donor, that's awesome.
Yeah, that's great.
Public comment? Superintendent Notes?
I just need to get a couple of dates from you. We have a Level III grievance from the professional unit, and it is stated in the protocol that we need to schedule that for the next, the very next upcoming school committee meeting. That was this, but the meeting was already posted when we received it, and so we couldn't do it, unfortunately. The next one that we have is on a Thursday evening, and unfortunately, council cannot make that date. So they've asked for a couple of dates that we might be able to recommend. Late afternoon would probably be best, not only for the staff, but council as well and MTA representative. So if we could maybe come up with two, maybe three dates. It doesn't have to be on the date of the next school committee meeting because they can't make it anyway.
Are you looking for next week?
I think if we can give them a date next week, we want it to be as soon as possible. Like I said, it's supposed to go to the next school committee meeting, so obviously we want to show an effort to get it done as quickly as we can.
So, and I just wanna, I believe, can I be in? This is that funny thing that Rebecca was talking about. Because it deals with salaries, I don't know that I can be involved with it. Do you know what I'm saying?
Sure, we can ask.
I mean, although this is Unit B, which is.
No, it's not Unit B, it's the paraprofessionals.
Oh, I'm not Unit B, paraprofessionals, I'm sorry.
We can ask her.
So I'll just check with Rebecca.
Or you can give her a call for it.
I will.
Yep. So three people need to be present, obviously. If all five can, that's great, or four, if we find out that Nancy can't be there.
So what are you looking at?
Well, in terms of afternoons for next week, and the whole thing would be executive session, and it would be up to you if you wanted to meet with Rebecca first or after the meeting, that's entirely up to you.
Will she be there any, she's gonna be there?
Yes.
As part of this team, okay?
Right, yes, of course. So I would think that the most convenient for the staff would be at four o'clock. So if you wanted to meet before, either three or 3:30, or if you wanted to meet after. But days that we, I believe, would be available for next week, actually, the only day I have is Thursday, and that's the school committee meeting.
I mean, I could.
Or Friday. I don't, I'm not sure the staff would like to do that on a Friday, but I certainly can ask them.
But I mean, if you do the Thursday thing, meeting with them at four, or 3:30, is that too much?
The council cannot attend that day on Thursday.
Who can?
Rebecca.
Oh, Rebecca can, all right. And what about Friday, the 22nd?
I can offer the Friday, I'm not sure they're gonna want it on a Friday, but certainly we can ask them.
I mean, that's, unfortunately, that's the best date for me.
Yeah, that would work well for me.
What, Friday?
Friday.
Yep, Friday's good for me.
So that can be one of the options. And then the following week, Monday or Tuesday, is a possibility for us.
I won't be able to, but. I could do either, Tuesday would be better, but I could do either.
Tuesday would be fine, or Monday or Tuesday, but Tuesday's probably better.
Tuesday would be better for me. Yeah, that, two, and two. Okay. Okay, we could do four, I believe. I'm sorry, which day, Monday or Tuesday?
Tuesday, the 26th.
Tuesday would be better, okay. And perhaps one more after Thanksgiving? Wednesday or Thursday? Well, Thursday we have a school committee. I could potentially do that earlier this day, too.
Which day? The fifth is, oh yeah, fifth and sixth. So is the fourth better, the Wednesday?
Oh, I can't do the fourth. But I mean, if, you know.
We could also meet at third work, if that's better.
If what?
We could move some things to meet the third work, also, if that's better for you.
What about the sixth, the Friday, no?
Again, it's fine for us, and I can offer.
And you don't know about them?
The sixth I could do.
How about Jen? Oh, you know what? I can't do the sixth. But I could do any other day.
Well, I could perhaps offer Friday, the 22nd, Thursday, the 26th, and the Thursday school committee meeting of the fifth.
Okay.
Yeah, and I just.
The only reason we weren't waiting until the fifth is because we didn't want to go that long, but if they have.
Well, hopefully they'll take the first two.
Exactly, if they have availability on one of the other days, we'd be fine. Okay, that's three, thank you very much, that's all we have.
All right. And that's all you have? Okay. Now it's Chrissy's turn, Assistant Superintendent Notes.
So we had a very successful professional development day on Friday. We started the day by showing a video called "The Future of Work." It's a special report by Vice, which is an HBO series.
I heard you had people in tears.
Yeah, it's very, very kind of frightening about what's happening with our future, but exciting times for education because we can really, if we are able to look ahead to the future, we can start thinking about how we're adjusting our programming here within Easton, which is great. Then we had the commissioner come, Commissioner Jeff Riley.
I think that's where you heard about tears.
Maybe that's.
Yeah, maybe that, that's, yeah. Commissioner Riley was fantastic. He just has a great way of presenting. He is, he comes across as a very just down-to-earth, real human being, which is great for our teachers to see. He, what was nice, actually, was during his presentation, some of the videos and messages he shared actually complimented the movie that they had seen beforehand. So it was, it was very nice to have that balance. But yes, teachers cried, I cried, we laughed.
Not surprised.
I know, right. We laughed, we, you know, he really related as a parent and as an educator, so he definitely caught the attention of our staff, and they left the morning very hopeful. So they went right into lunch and were able to have those conversations with each other, which was very nice.
We, we have been very encouraged by what we have heard directly from the commissioner about his observations in his first year, which was last year, and plans that he has going forward, things he agrees with, doesn't agree with, and so forth. It's been very validating, and we've been sharing that with the staff, but he has such a way of delivering it, and he is to us authentic, and we have faith that what he's saying, he's gonna follow through on, and we just thought it was very important for the staff to hear it themselves. And so he was kind enough to come and meet with them for an hour and share the things that he has, you know, as hope for the future, share his priorities. So I think that it was very validating for everyone, and for that reason, I think we're hopeful for the future.
Then in the afternoon, we had about eighteen different workshops for people to choose from to attend, and just as a reminder, it was the first full-day professional development day that we had our paraprofessionals with us. And the whole focus was our social-emotional learning. It was, it was wonderful, just to walk the halls of Richardson Homestead and Easton Middle School, just to see the smiles on everyone's faces, to walk in to the workshops and hear the in-depth conversations. We did show angst again to the staff. We had two different showings, so the teachers could choose and paraprofessionals could choose to go to those. We had Betty and Zita from Family and Consumer Science. They asked teachers to, and paraprofessionals, to take a role of a student in their class, and they baked scones. So, and then the teachers had to reflect on what it was like as a student with the challenges that they were facing, which was really powerful. Kristin Shea did a wonderful workshop where they, it was more focused on teacher wellness and what lifts you, and there was art, a lot of artwork that went into that. They created these two beautiful wings that were, that were at the middle school, and teachers were taking pictures with the wings. It was, it was great, and so many others, you know, mindfulness. We had some elementary people doing workshops and middle school, everybody.
And that's what was an important thing to us and that I really want to highlight. More than half of the sessions were delivered by our internal experts. They were, you know, they're willing to share with their colleagues, they are experts in what they are presenting. So while we think it's very important that we get the very best presenters for them, and we do choose very carefully about some of the speakers that come in, there are many sessions that there are internal experts right in our district, they just don't have the time together to share these things. And so it was very, I agree with Chrissy, walking around, it was very, I was very full of pride, I wasn't surprised at all at the quality of these programs that they were offering to one another. I just wish that they had more time together, that they could share these strategies. They did phenomenal job, all of them.
Yeah, we did put out a survey for feedback. Some great ideas are coming through in those, in those surveys that I'm looking forward to sharing with the staff. So it was, it was all around a great day, and I just look forward to providing more of those opportunities for our educators in the district.
Now, I know we just had the two days, the October and the November, and it worked out nicely for the long weekends. There's still, are there still two half-days left, or one half-day left?
Not for the entire staff.
No, okay.
It's split up because they have different number of parent meetings. Elementary has more than secondary has, and so unfortunately, not everyone, for example, one level, it's different from PK to two, three to five, and six to twelve.
Right.
Six to twelve has one left, three to five has two left, PK to two has three.
Okay.
So now it's a lot more difficult, and the half-days, as you know, are almost impossible to schedule because they all get out of school at a different time. So even if we do offerings.
They have to be within that level, yeah.
Yeah, they have to be within that level, and we get a lot of positive feedback, and we see the value of them meeting across levels, to share strategies across levels, to know that this is happening all throughout the district, to meet different people and be able to talk, you know, about content area things all the way up PK to twelve, et cetera. So they're not, they're not the best form of professional development, but of course, we will find things that are going to be just as useful for them, we'll make sure that they do get a lot out of it. It's just, it won't be the same amount for everyone, and it won't, they won't be together, but we'll work to optimize the very best we can.
Okay, that's awesome, thank you.
And that's all I have?
That's it?
Yes.
We were working on this other little thing called the school project.
Yes. That's right there, do you want to talk about? Do you want to say anything to our fans that are watching?
Our supporters, I would say, is a little more accurate. As you know, and as I've written, extremely thankful to every single resident who voted for this, residents that didn't vote for this, who are going to contribute. We are committed to making sure that every dollar that is invested is invested in the most responsible way that will bring benefit back to this community through the education of the children and the investment that they're doing that will bring value to their homes, value to their town. We will absolutely follow this through, and we hope that everyone will be proud of the result. People have approached us and congratulated us, and I just congratulate them, because I, whether they understand it yet or not, this is going to help every single person in this town. Whether it's avoiding issues that we knew were coming up that were imminent and unavoidable, or as they said, in the form of, you know, a community space they can use, obviously, those that are gonna have children going through it, but grandchildren, and also truly the value on their homes and the improvement it's gonna bring to the community itself. And we're, you know, like I said, we're up to the challenge to prove to people how that's going to happen, and I hope that they'll be able to see that over the course of the next decade.
And I also got that written down, like, to thank people. First of all, you, Dr. Cabral, did a fabulous job at the town meeting at Stone Island. Thank you to Stone Island, DPW, and everybody, the town office, every, I mean, it was like a well-oiled machine. And you did a great job, so thank you for that. And then, unfortunately, the day of voting was such a miserable day. Oh my gosh, couldn't have been, well, it could have been snowing, I guess.
Yes, yeah.
So that would have made it worse.
Weather-wise.
Yeah.
No, no, not trying, weather-wise, trying to get to the high school and everything else, but I think everybody was on top of their game, and I'm so excited about seeing the new school and having our whole, everybody all in one place. I think that's gonna be great, very good, well, thank you. All right, school committee notes.
Just kind of following up with what Nancy said, I also want to thank Chrissy for all your work on the project as well, the educational plan and then everything else, and Jane Martin, who.
Yeah.
Like, caring for the project. Two years, and did an incredible job, so.
Yes, she did.
You know, everyone that volunteered and came out and voted and supported. Really, it's a great thing for us.
All right, so I have a couple of things. First of all, as chair of the school committee, I got a email from Wendy, from Connor Reed, I guess, but from Wendy. And it has this, did you get this?
Yes.
So it has this, so just something for you to look through. Lynn was nice enough to print these out for me. But this is the fiscal 2021 preliminary revenue projections. And I guess in this email, it's, you know, we have to have everything submitted by Friday, December 6th, is that correct?
Preliminary information.
Yeah, preliminary. So we anticipate another lean year with very limited increases, and as such, a proposed budget should be at level service. So we're already looking at, you know, behind the eight ball here, but just, you know, something for you to look at, and we can continue to talk about this as we go along. Does anybody want to make any comments on this, on the budget thing?
No, we have a budget supplement meeting coming up in and out early December.
Okay, yeah, right, you'll probably get it by the winter when it goes. Another thing, Dr. Cabral, that you sent to us was something that you had said, sent to Connor, the article from Rockland. About, do you want to talk about that? Do you want this to look at?
Yeah, when you say, so when Nancy says article, it's a warrant article? Not a YouTube article?
Oh, sorry.
No, that's okay, you said it correctly. So there is, some of my colleagues in other districts have put a warrant on town meeting that allows them to investigate Title IV reimbursement. So that is not something we have been able to get reimbursement for up to this point. Our number of students who are going through the system of Child and Family Services, there is now some Title IV reimbursement possible for foster care transportation. So the way the law is right now, if a child is under custody of the Commonwealth, if they're in foster care, if they were, so I'll do it both ways, if they were going to school in Easton and then they are placed in foster care in Mansfield or wherever, it is up to the family. If the foster care family, in the best interest of the child, if the child continues in Easton or goes to school in Mansfield. If they go to school in Mansfield, we are responsible for either on our own or if we can come to an agreement with Mansfield to transport the student back and forth every day. Likewise, same thing, if the child were living in Mansfield and came to Easton, we would agree with Easton to share transportation. So now there's a possibility for us to get some relief from those payments. We are asking that if we do, if we are able to get that reimbursement, that it will come back to the state department. So that we can, obviously, it is not something that we have been able to appropriately, or even with 100% reliability, budget for, because we never know if any or how many children might be in foster care in any given year. It has never been a line item up until this point, but this is the first year we actually put, I believe we put $70,000 in there because it has been such an increasing issue for our children. And so it had reliably, year after year, been tens of thousands of dollars that we hadn't anticipated. And so now we're putting it in there, but in any year, it can certainly go over that, and we could not have any children, but we have seen a general uptick. Unfortunately, it has not gone backwards, it has been a general uptick in the number of students in foster care. And so we had asked that Connor consider putting this on next town meeting warrant, and his first response was he didn't see, that it would be a problem, but he's, of course, going to do his due diligence and look it over very carefully, and so it's possible it may be on a future town warrant.
Okay. So have we been getting any of the IV reimbursement? Or it would be a new source of revenue? So this would be maybe a little bit different from the argument that we have over the Medicaid reimbursement, where they're kind of like, it's already a revenue source, so it just goes into.
And it's not, it's reimbursement as opposed to revenue because it is something in our budget that we're using for that. And, you know, if we spend, you know, say we have $70,000, if we spend $9,000, it might get us down to, you know, $83,000 or something. So it still goes over, but we're, so we're basically looking at this not to fund that, it never will fund that. We're looking at it to mitigate what we're putting into it that we aren't budgeting for, that we don't have the money to budget for. So it's, it's less of a revenue source as it is a mitigation to try and cut back on unanticipated expenses.
Do you know what happened on that warrant in Rockland? Do you know what happened?
I believe it went through in Rockland, yeah.
It got passed?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you. All right, I have, just going through my pile. Jen, did you want to talk, did you get an answer to this? Did you find out about this?
No, no, so I'd like to.
Just, I'd be curious to find out about this.
Yeah, so a parent brought up a concern about there was some, some free test prep, testing that's being offered at the high school this weekend. And so the parent had reached out, she had concerns about the fact that it went directly to students in addition to parents. Her words were that, you know, it's, it's an opportunity for a company, which is a for-profit entity, to impress upon vulnerable students and families in need for test prep to increase their scores. So the concern is, you know, you get your scores back and say, well, you know, you need whatever. And then she wondered how thoroughly vetted the company was, if other companies were considered, et cetera. So I shared that with Nancy and I've got Alicia on it. So I had worked for a test prep company for about ten years, and this is the kind of thing that is a routine marketing tool. So typically, when the company I worked for went to pitch a school, there was almost like an RFP or RFI process where they were invited to make a proposal and share their information, and the school district would evaluate and compare among providers before letting them do anything in the school, and, you know, would, would either basically say, you know, we've researched these companies, and sometimes some school districts will offer multiple test prep options. They might have, you know, the Caplin and Princeton Review, whatever. And, you know, so they might say, okay, we've vetted these companies, and we think that these are a good opportunity for your student, and here are the services. Or they might say, this company's coming, we don't endorse them. So there didn't seem to be any type of disclaimer on the email that went out that stated whether or not, how thoroughly they've been researched, and if the school district is endorsing them or not. So I was wondering what the process is for a vendor like that. So, and the students have to sign up through the company, so the company has their contact information, and will then market tutoring services and test prep services to them. So just wondering, what's the?
That is done through the guidance department? So we'll get the information from them and report to you.
Okay, so I actually, I did speak with Susan Mancuso yesterday, who's our Director of Guidance, and she, this is a, this is a program that they're piloting as a school, because they are, many of the products that they have, actually Naviance, which is the source that we use, actually have, has. This particular program is something that Naviance doesn't offer, so they decided to pilot this particular portion of it to see if this is something that we would want to add on to the offering. to see if this is something that we would want to add on to the offerings that we provide our students. So I think it's more of a, of a school business partnership rather than giving the company resources to solicit students on their own. So I will, I will further investigate this, Susan, and make sure that this is, you know, that that is not the case. That's a good concern.
It doesn't answer a lot of your questions, so we're gonna get that information. All right, thank you, thank you, thanks.
All right, and on the subject of school pictures, does each school, what's the rule, PACs, PTA, do they decide who takes the pictures in their schools?
My, if you want me to jump in...
Jump in.
On the PAC board, in many places here, PTA PAC board. I believe the principals sign the contracts. But the, the PTAs are the ones who get marketed to. And they'll, if they want to change vendors, they're typically the ones who would raise the issue. I know that when we used to have, for a few years, the PAC boards were meeting, and one of the, one of the issues that came up was the inconsistency of vendors across the school. So you would have Life Touch, I believe, still pre-cated to Coffee Pond, I think is still at RO. Mari Photography, I think, is still doing the middle school. And then you go back to Life Touch at the high school. So I know parents would complain that you didn't get, if you had kids in multiple schools, there was no family pricing discount because it would be different vendors. The backgrounds are different, so if you display them all together, they're a little bit inconsistent.
It is the parent groups that choose it. They run it as a fundraiser. They do make a profit from it, and so they choose. But I have not gotten any information that there's a concern, so if...
If this isn't a concern, this is a vendor. This is a vendor that I got a, oh, you guys did too.
Yeah, but a vendor should not be contacting you. Please feel free to refer them to us.
All right, then that's what I will do.
Yeah, if you didn't answer vendor questions, they're gonna keep contacting you.
I just said, thank you for your email, and I will get back to you after our next meeting.
Yeah, they should not.
All right, so I will send this to you.
Or I would even suggest just refer them, just let them know that that's handled by the PTA, and they, they can find those contacts. I'm still getting marketing.
And did they say in their email, I know this usually goes through the PTA, but we just thought we'd contact you anyway?
The office did let me know that school pictures was the responsibility of PAC.
Well, just, I... And obviously, you can do anything you'd like, and I would never think of telling you what to do about this thing. But as someone who receives marketing probably fifty times a day, and I'm not exaggerating, either you're totally entitled to not respond or to say, this does not fall within the purview of the school committee. And if that's how you feel, which is perfectly fine, because you do not have to deal with that. What I have found, that the more words you put, I think, you call them, and that's how many times they call you back. So the more brevity, the better. And also, if you go all the way down to unsubscribe, sometimes you can get them to stop sending them because if you were to get as many vendor calls as we do, you would not have anything else to do. It's just a suggestion. You can certainly do whatever.
So I'm just, I will email this company back and just say, it's up to the PAC, P A T, PTA, excuse me. And I, yeah, just leave it at that and just say, thank you for your...
Yeah, you do, it's not your responsibility. You feel like you have to answer that.
Right, okay. No, thank you. No, I just, you know, sometimes I feel like I internalize all, you know, it's like, oh! Okay, and then one other thing, this had come up before about the, and we discussed it and said we cannot afford it, this whole, I got another email about this keeping up with your kids on their, the sports thing, like lacrosse or soccer or whatever. And apparently, some town had spent like twenty thousand dollars to get, I know we can't afford it. But do we, would it be possible for maybe Mr. Matthews just to do a little investigation into how to get, I don't know, I can give them all these, I can give them all these emails.
If it's the same email that you forwarded to me?
Yes.
A parent wants us to get software and to supervise student social media interaction, and that is not something that we can do legally. There are a lot of implications there, and we simply don't have people to monitor it. It's not just the cost, it's the people to actually look at.
Yeah, I thought the, I thought the concern though was specifically about, and I have kids who are, you know, in sports and music, et cetera. You have to opt-in in many teams to communication. So they will use either text messages, or some use, you know, some might use apps to communicate basic information like a practice change, or who has to bring the water bottles or whatever. And so it can be inconsistent, who's in charge of that communication thread at the high school, whether or not there are any adults on it. So that's something that often falls under the purview of team captains. And with no adults involved, things can really go sideways. And, but they can't opt out of them because it's also the same way that the coach is communicating through the captain's information that every member of the team needs to know. So I think that's...
Everybody can opt out. There are other ways to get information, whether it's through email or what have you. There, there are some comments that go back and forth on that, and students like to be in it, but we will ensure that people do not have to sign into that.
That's not happening in practice.
We were gonna make sure that nobody has to opt in to that.
Okay, that's...
If they don't want to, or if the parents don't want them to.
Yeah, yeah, yes.
There are many, many more forms of communication.
Yeah, so I think if that could be a policy that's put in place and practiced consistently, some teams, I've noticed, you know, are, are, some teams, it comes, the coach or the desk of so-and-so will send an email, and that has maybe a schedule for the week. Other teams, all the communication is being handled among the students, and not all of it's appropriate all the time. There's sometimes other stuff that sneaks in. And that was, so for this parent, she, she can monitor texts, but not the app, right? Was that it, that there was, somebody was using an app that...
Wasn't it, she, she didn't want her, she didn't want, know that, she wanted to be able to monitor it. Any adult consignment also? This person didn't want other people on there knowing that they were signed in?
Yeah.
That's, again, a choice.
Right, right.
But...
Was, in this instance, was, was there not being used versus just a text?
There wasn't.
Okay.
Yeah, and I think for, I know she just brought up lacrosse right now, which was a, group me? Group me. And then I think earlier on, it was a different one.
Teams now, there's so many.
Right, yeah.
And it was Stoughton that bought a license for twenty thousand dollars. That's a lot of money.
It's not just the cost of that, it's also people monitoring it, that we do not have that.
Yeah.
Unfortunately, unfortunately, we don't.
All right, thanks. And, oh, one more thing, sorry, I'm taking up the whole meeting. I know Jackie and I are already on board, I believe, for the two, we have two policy meetings set up, right? And so other members, of course, are invited to join us. So I don't know where we're gonna meet, but we have...
What are the dates of those again?
So I, you don't know these, so I'm gonna tell you right now. So November twenty-second from twelve to two-thirty, and December fifth from nine to eleven. And hopefully, we can get that all done in those two weeks. I just don't know where we're gonna meet, and my other thing is, we have to post this, right? Because even if it's more than, it might just be two, but it could be more of us. So, so I will give you that information so that we can get that posted. So...
You can sign up here if you wanna use the space, or the conference room, since there are only a couple of you.
Yeah, that, well, that's kinda what I was thinking downstairs, because it's close. This is kinda, it's nice. I can't wait, I can't wait till we have our new school. Our own little place. So excited, okay, I know the little things. And on our next agenda, so you all know, is we're going to put on the naming possible for the new, that core scenario for the new school.
Not naming the school, but discussing how you would like to go about that.
And I know Carolyn and I are, I believe, probably a year ago now, whenever it was, we were supposed to be doing that naming.
All right.
And we haven't done that yet. We'll, we'll get together, we'll do it. On the list. All right, Jackie, come on, nothing from you today.
Nothing from you. Oh, I said nothing about the school, so.
And Jen, you all said, Lynn, would you like to say anything?
I just wanna warn you all, not warn you, let you know that at the next school committee meeting also is the NCAS presentation. Come from elementary schools. And we are looking at brevity and quality, yes.
And this was the second year of, on the...
It's the third year, three through eight. It's the first year at the high school. So three through eight will have some comparative data, but the high school does not.
This was the third time they did it on the committee?
Yes, yes.
The points they send out were really, really useful. I mean, you can really kinda pinpoint where the, it was, I, I, because I've never seen one before, so it was really interesting to look at.
Well, hopefully, we do all of this extra work for a reason, and that is an improved tool and reporting, right?
Oh, one thing, congratulations to volleyball, girls soccer, boys soccer, marching band, and anybody else I might have missed. But really, I think those are the three teams that made close season. Very exciting, and good to see so many fans and supporters out.
Wonderful show choir weekend.
Oh, that's right, yeah, this stage was really great. Apologies to any groups that I missed.
Yeah, no, congratulations. And then, and then after Thanksgiving, they stopped the whole winter season. It's just my spot. All right, everybody's good? All right, do I have a motion to adjourn this meeting?
So...
That's second. All right, all those in favor? It's tough with just three of us.